Six thirty-one, I'm gonna call this the October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, regular business meeting of St. Louis Park School Board, meaning, uh, School Board to order. Uh, before we get started, I'll read our land acknowledgement. We are gathered on the land of Dakota Nocheboi peoples. I ask you to, uh, join me in acknowledging the Dakota Nocheboi community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. St. Louis Park Public Schools also acknowledges that it was founded upon exclusions and erasures of many indigenous peoples, including those on whose land this school district is located. This acknowledgement demonstrates a commitment to dismantling the ongoing legacies of colonial power, the district's desire to support the ongoing work of local indigenous communities to thrive in our schools. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Um, the first thing that we would have would be public comment, then we have superintendent's report. Our discussion items are our data story, talking about continuous improvement planning. We have a, um, a community education program update tonight as well. Then we have the consent agenda, and we have several things on the action items, uh, which are, uh, quarterly budget update for donations and grants, policy development, second reading of policy seven twenty-two data requests, uh, second reading of policy six one two point one, development of parent guardian family engagement, second reading of two fourteen out of state travel by board members, um, second reading of nine oh seven rewards, and then we have item eight F, which is a rule of superintendent's performance review and timeline, eight G, employment agreement for our director of human resources, then we'd have board member updates and adjournments. That is our agenda, so it is recommended that the school board approve the agenda, um, as I just shared for October twenty-twenty-second, as presented, we have a motion to...
Some of it.
By agenda, we have second?
Second.
Ooh, it sounds like it was, yeah, so by split second, so, um, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's a six-zero. Um, do we have, um, I don't believe anybody signed up for public comment, do we, do we not have anybody in the back of the room? We have one person?
No, no, no.
Nobody, nobody here has signed up, okay. But as a reminder to people, this is an option for people to provide public comment. We have other things, including school listening sessions, we had one, which I think we may get a little update about, uh, school board updates at some point, um, uh, but then we'll have another one coming up, I believe, November second, it's a Saturday, right? It's a kindergarten...
Yes.
Experience coming up here, but information about that's online, some other opportunities for people as well. Okay, um, that brings us up to superintendent report, so I will turn it over to Dr. Hines.
Thank you Chair Cox. Um, at St. Louis Park Public Schools, we see, inspire, and empower each learner to live their brilliance in an environment that centers student voice and experience to create racially applicable learning that energizes and enhances the spirit of our community. I'd like to ground us in our mission at the start of my report. Over the last month, we had a, uh, we've had a few great highlights. Um, we had our high school homecoming and ribbon cutting ceremony, and a visit from Commissioner Willie Jett. Let's wait on the slides to...
We need to physically advance.
So, we have also have had opportunities for students to celebrate and learn about different cultures through Hispanic Heritage Month and Indigenous Peoples' Day. Each site held their own celebrations, including school assemblies, reading books, and engaging in culturally relevant curriculum. Additionally, I am excited to share that we have selected a partner to engage in our strategic planning process. We will be working with Pink Consulting, who vi- who envisions, who visions is for every leader to gain intercultural competence. We will be engaging various members of our community throughout this process, and I will be sure to share updates. Earlier today, we held a budget listening session. Our di- our district is facing a budget deficit of about two million dollars, and we are in the early stages of determining what comes next. Hearing from members of our school community is important, so we can determine the best course of action. And lastly, we will be holding our kindergarten welcome event on November second. This is an exciting event where incoming kindergarten families can learn about St. Louis Park Public Schools. We are excited to have members of the school board in attendance to meet those families and anyone else who would like to come and share insight and feedback. Thank you, and that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Hines. Um, that brings us up to our discussion items, and the first item is, uh, uh, information about our continuous improvement planning from Dr. Sylvie Lafayette, our Director of Assessment and Research and Evaluation, and she's presenting an overview of our revised continuous improvement planning, the SIP process, which we, we have a CIP where I work, and so I'm always like, oh, this is a SIP, um, in processes at SLP schools. Participants will discuss, um, how the revised CIP process will enhance student achievement and foster culture of growth at each site, and this is, um, I'm going part, we've heard a little bit of this in a previous, in one of our study sessions. So our, our process is to bring that stuff to study sessions, to have an open discussion about that, and then have a more formal presentation informed by those conversations and other learnings that we have in the meantime, and then present them to the full board and to the community in situations like this. So, I hand it over to Dr. Lafayette.
Thank you. Uh, thank you Chair Cox, Superintendent Dr. Hines, members of the board. As mentioned, I am Sylvie Lafayette, I'm the Director of Assessment, Research, and Evaluation, and for tonight's presentation, data story is simply an overview of our continuous improvement planning process, whereas in the previous school board meeting, you heard an in-depth example of how that works at the middle school, but tonight, what I'd like to present to you and our community is an overview of how we pay attention to continuous improvement planning at each and every site. So, um, as mentioned in the previous school board session, uh, in our earlier meeting this month, our continuous improvement planning process is a culmination of muscle that we've been building over the last couple of years. And so really, our principals have been studying our data, last year was the first year where we had data meetings monthly at every single site. So our principals had been aware of the data and the goals that they were thinking about, and so they, they began planning for their, uh, continuous improvement planning goals in May-June, and then in August, they brought their leadership teams together to finalize the continuous improvement plan goals, uh, at the Data Advance, which is, uh, the centerpiece of the Data Advance is our youth data analyst interns presenting a research project where they spent the entire summer studying our quantitative and qualitative metrics, and then they finalize, our principals and their leadership teams begin to finalize their continuous improvement planning goals in August, and then they submitted for, uh, approval to our Assistant Superintendent Dr. Mobley, which has already taken place, and then, as many of our sites and families have already experienced, in September, they, our sites or principals began communicating their continuous improvement plan goals to staff and families. And so monthly, at every single site, early learning through high school, what we've been having, our data team meetings focused on those continuous improvement planning goals, as well as principal-led learning walks centered around our teacher development and evaluation rubric in order to build our muscle to help meet the goals of the continuous improvement plan. And so just to let our community know, these are the different components within the plan that gets submitted in September. So each site, early learning through high school, is asked to submit up to four goals, one being the care team goal, you take a look at that first column, care team, SMART goal, and an academic goal, oftentimes it's math, and the second academic goal, oftentimes there's reading component or literacy component, and either a family engagement or a building culture and climate SMART goal. And again, many, many of these goals have already been communicated to staff and families in September as a first touch point. And as our principals and their leadership teams have been building those goals, what we've asked them to consider is that top row of questions. As a building, where do we want to go, what are our SMART goals, and SMART stands for specific, measurable, attainable, uh, results-based, and time-bound. And then also in that second column, as I mentioned, we have had five years of youth data analyst interns doing research based on a deeper study of our quantitative and qualitative metrics, and so they've submitted recommendations, which is included in the appendix of our continuous improvement plan, and so we ask each and every site to consider what those recommendations have been and how they are aligned to the continuous improvement plan goals. And then in those last two columns, which I would argue are the most important, is what action will we take to get to where we want to be at our school site, and then is what we are doing making a difference by studying qualitative and quantitative metrics at our, uh, monthly data team meetings, as well as continuously throughout the year? And I would argue that, again, those two columns at the very end of the, that plan are the most important, because if we don't lean into the actions and study, if those actions are making a difference, we'll never get to the SMART goals, and we won't be able to live out the recommendations of our youth. Something that is new to our continuous improvement plan, as I continue to mention in tonight's presentation, is that we have had, we've asked each site to provide at least three touch points to our community. We heard loud and clear last year from our families, they wanted to know how we're paying attention to our metrics around reading, around math, and so we've asked every single site to communicate their, their continuous improvement plan goals to their community, to their staff, as well as families, at least three times throughout the year. And one resource, thanks to our communications department, located on our website now, every single, uh, site, early learning through high school, has their continuous improvement plan uploaded to our website, so if families are interested in how are we measuring our metrics around math and reading and culture and climate, and what are the actions that are taking place at every single site, I would encourage our families to go and to take a look at our continuous improvement plan website. With that, I will take questions.
And have we heard some of this stuff before? This is talking largely about the process. Is there any, uh, questions that board members have, or anything else that's... I know that I, I've seen this in action at the Quilla PTO meeting, and that is a, um, situation where the principal and assistant principal shared this information with attendees there, so I've seen people sharing this information.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, the, the website where these are, which is great, um, for transparency, but does, is that gonna be updated throughout the year with the data that, like that last column, or will that be shared out at some point? Um, 'cause I know right now it was the goals and then the activities, I think, is what it's on.
Right, the goals and the activities, right. Thank you, that's a great question. I don't believe the plan is to share updated data almost.
The updated data will get shared on the webpage.
You have to come up, 'cause no one's gonna be able to hear you.
That's right. The, the current plan is not to necessarily have the updated data shared on the webpage, but it is to be communicated with families at one of the next, um, three communication points that they'll have with their families. So that includes, um, site communications within their newsletters, and then it also includes another presentation update, I believe, at their PTO meetings.
I, I guess I'm, I'll be curious how folks feel about that, if they feel like that provides enough access to the updates or not, so, we'll see.
Yeah. This is, I think, our first year doing this, so I think it'll...
I think it's great.
It will help to inform what type of information is beneficial as we move forward too. So if we end up finding that, that's, that's going to be helpful, then we'll link presentations to our...
Thank you so much.
Good question.
Great, any other comments from people? Again, uh, as a reminder, just to everybody at the table here, and presenters, like we have this, make sure that you're speaking out, because, uh, to pick things up on the microphones, and for people to hear them at home, and hear it on recordings, and on YouTube, and all that stuff.
I think it's just back of the room.
In the back of the room as well, too, so, um, thank you people, thank you so much for providing this update, and people should, if they have questions about this, they can reach out to you, they can also reach out to their, um, site leadership to ask some questions about that as well.
Yep.
Thank you very much, really appreciate this stuff. Um, next up, community education programs, and again, uh, this we have, uh, approaching the table right now is Patrice Howard, and she's brought a couple of people along with her, Victoria and Kellye, and they're gonna talk a little bit more, we've heard, again, some of this stuff, I think, in a longer version, and now we're gonna hear a more focused version of that, right? So I'll let them know. Dorinda Howard.
All right.
Talk to us.
All right. Good evening, I'm Patrice Howard, Director of Community Education. Thank you for having us here again, Chair Cox, member of the board, uh, members of the board, excuse me, and Superintendent Dr. Hines. Yes, this is, uh, I believe, three of four, uh, opportunities to share a little bit more in depth about our, um, our review of, uh, last school year's, uh, community education programs, as well as summer. Uh, and then, if we're lucky, we'd get to hear, if we have enough time, we'll get to hear a little bit about what to expect for this year, so I'm gonna pass it over to my colleagues here, so, I think you're first.
Hello, my name is Victoria Dottor, I am the coordinator for the school age program. Uh, we had a fantastic summer this summer, we were lucky enough to be at Aquila, thank you to all, everybody at Aquila for hosting us this summer, and that fa- that playground is fantastic over there, we were loving it. Um, we had forty-two more students than we did last year, so we had four hundred and twenty-three students this summer, that's more than we have ever had, I had to add an extra classroom, because we have so many children. Um, and thank you to School Nutrition for being able to be there to serve us the free lunches and snacks through the summer food program. Um, onsite, we had some fun things, like a DJ party, our annual flea market, and since Roller Garden doesn't exist anymore, we were able, I found a place, Skate Time Skates, that bring the skates to us, and we got to participate in that for an entire week with the skates in the, the gymnasium. Um, some of the, our field trip highlights were Edina Pool, uh, St. Louis Park Rec Center, of course, Cascade Bay, and my favorite, Volker Beach. Um, and some of the challenges we're having is buses are very, very expensive, so we're having to do more stuff onsite, just because of how expensive the buses are. Our school year program continues to grow, these are the numbers from last year, this year we have even more kids. Um, our biggest school is PSI, it continues to be, we have almost fifty percent of those kids come to us, two hundred and fifty kids come to us after school. So that continues to grow.
Hello, um, I'm Kellye O'Brien, hi, and the Youth Enrichment Program Supervisor. Um, and last year, we had a great year, um, our numbers are up here, so at our elementary after-school enrollment, we had one thousand and thirty-two students, um, engaged after school. Um, at the middle school level, we had a hundred and fifty students. Um, for driver's ed, including summer, we, um, taught two hundred and fifteen students how to drive, um, and then we also have weekend, evening, school release day programs, um, so we had three hundred and twenty students engaged last year in that programming. Um, for our summer afternoon enrichment, which is after summer learning academy, students can stay with us, um, until four o'clock, um, so we had ninety-one students doing that this summer, um, having a full day of free programming, um, over at Peter Hobart. Um, and then our summer learning at play, which is our fee-based camps, um, we had three hundred and forty-six students, so that is also at Peter Hobart, um, so we had tons of students over there. And then I wanted to give you guys a, a little look at twenty-four, twenty-five, because we are off to like a great start. Um, in our elementary enrichment class enrollments, like as of October fifteenth, we already have five hundred and sixty-four enrollments, so that is more than half of what we had for the whole year last year, um, so we're excited about that. Our most popular activity is Grand Masters of Chess. It is like, by far, we got forty kids every single Friday at PSI, so many we had to add a second day, um, of chess, so that is definitely our most popular activity. And then, um, at the middle school level, I'm really excited about how many middle school students we have engaged. I've just left from over there, and there was so many students outside at five-thirty waiting to get picked up or on the bus, it was, it was so great to see. Uh, but yeah, we already have ninety-one students signed up in middle school activities by October fifteen, um, so I'm really excited about how strong our middle school, um, engagement is in the after-school space. We had thirty-three students at our first debate practice, um, and we got three new student-led clubs starting in November, so, yeah, we're excited about twenty-two, twenty-five.
So does the theater program, is that part of, no, that's separate?
Correct, yep, theater is run by the school, yep.
Got it.
Yep.
We do have theater, like, activities.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure. Um, and then what's also, um, not listed here is Summer Learning Academy, elementary and middle school. So last summer, we had, uh, about two hundred and fifty enrolled, um, they did not complete, about two hundred, uh, students, uh, completed the Summer Learning Academy program for elementary, and about seventy-four middle school. Credit recovery is not listed here, so, yeah, and, as well as aquatics. So aquatics, uh, you'll see that at our next presentation.
Will you share the credit recovery information with us?
Sure.
At the next one, or?
Sure, sure.
Other questions, comments, feedback?
I'd like to come to debate, to debate practice, that would be fun.
Yeah. I'll have Miss Rose on though.
Um, really great to see it, I, it's really nice to know that, um, kids feel welcome at our schools, you know, like, some of that, I think, is about making it welcoming places too, um, and they want to participate and engage with friends, and, and I think we have some good spaces to do that nowadays, too. And that's really great to see, and so I'm glad that we're finding ways to make that happen, because it feels too like, there's some energy there, and some ways that we're making things happen. Like you said, we're adding chess, we're not saying no, we're saying, let's add another chess, you know, and let's have some debate clubs, and let's do some things there, so. I know we've heard some successes, I don't, I don't know if that's been shared with the, with the public, um, about some of the successes of our debate efforts too, right? Did we share that publicly?
It was not shared publicly, I think, just via this, uh, space, the city, um, session space, uh, the competition, they break third place.
Yeah, at the city championship, yep, they got third, one of the, um, pairs got third place, best overall, yep.
So it's, it's not, I mean, it's for fun, but it's also that kids are like, doing things outside, you know, and doing some other things, so, really appreciate this update, really appreciate these, uh, resources that go into it, and so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, all right. Okay. Um, at this point, we'll, uh, do our consent agenda, and, um, on the consent agenda, we have our business items, which are payroll, recap of expenditures, electric fund transfers, accounts payable disbursement, investment holdings, donations, and those are the items that are on our consent agenda, so it is recommended that the school board approve the consent agenda with the following business and personnel items for the October twenty-second, twenty-two, four school board meeting, as presented, do I have a motion?
Some of it.
Taylor, do I have a second on this?
Second.
Second, and, um, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, passes, five-zero. Okay, that brings us up to a quarterly budget update for donations and grants.
Good evening.
Thank you, thank you.
Chair Cox.
And you have a guest?
Yes, I do. Good evening, Chair Cox, Superintendent Dr. Hines, members of the board, I am here with Josiah Nivone, who's the Assistant Director of Business Services. So, um, he's done all of the work on this action item, and we're, and we're just learning the way to do this together, so, what we're going to start doing, I believe that this was foreshadowed a little bit, is every time, when, when we get donations and specialized grants to the district, we wanna be sure that we've set up a, not only the revenue in the budget, but the expenditures in the budget, so staff who are spending these items know the limitations of their spending, and it's, it's reflected in their individual budgets. So we're gonna update the budget quarterly for, um, for revenues that have come in over that period of time. Um, it's a practice that I've done in other districts, it's just a way to keep tabs and accountability on budgets. And any budget adjustment requires school board approval, and in the future, we'll do this on the consent agenda, so we won't have to sit here and do this. So, I don't know if you wanna put any more context around that?
Oh, I mean, you did it pretty clearly, um...
So these are the, um, the grants that have come in over the first quarter of the year.
Can you read that bottom line for us, the total amounts there for people with grainy resolutions at home, and things like that?
So we, we'll have to do a little bit of math, but I believe, uh, between, uh, the general fund and community service fund, we have about, almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So our community members have been very generous, and, yeah.
Yeah, and these grants are things that people have to, um, apply for, right? There's a process, it's every month, a lot of paperwork for, and it's, and go through the process, and so, every people have, have to take these steps.
Exactly, we did receive one donation from, um, United Way, is that for PSI? Uh, so, that was a little different, yeah.
And that was on behalf of a mem- of a family member whose students go to PSI?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so...
So now we have budgets set up in all of these, um, accounts for the budget managers who are overseeing this, this spending, and, um, and the board will have that reflected then in the budget at the end of the year.
All right, so is there any questions, any comments, any feedback people have related to, um, our update on donations and grants? Again, just really appreciative, we know that it's a lot, there's a lot of numbers, there's a lot of dollars floating around in lots of different places, and it takes a lot of work, so there's not only the application side, but then also following that money, tracing that money, all of that stuff, tracking that money, doing all of that paperwork, too, so we really appreciate your efforts.
I, I guess I do have a question, I apologize, Chair Cox.
Sure, no, over, yeah, it happens.
Um, so, the Financial Advisory Committee, um, they wanted to look into the grants, correct? Am I, or what did they wanna look into?
Um, expenditures, just in general.
Well, for sure, expenditures, they always wanna look into expenditures, but I thought, um, so for, is this to, so for example, I'm looking at, at the first one, the foundation grant to the high school for ten thou- that's the, a ten thousand award to the high school.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, um, do we ever, I don't care, I'm not trying to say that I'm, want to know, but it would be curious to know what the grants are for, I know, um, I know that teachers are writing things to do innovative activities, and that these are, the grants are for kind of going above and beyond maybe what we would offer, is that correct?
Exactly, exactly, um, so, these grants from the foundation are, um, the teachers or advisors or whoever, they apply for them, and the foundation picks a select, uh, few, and they fund whatever initiative that they wanna, um, that they wanna participate there in. And it's all reimbursement-based, so they have to, like, spend the money the way that they wrote the grant, in order for us to get reimbursed for it.
I gotcha.
Yeah.
And by requiring the establishment of precise expenditure budgets, we're sure that we're, we're making sure that they're coding it and spending it in, in the way that allows us to get our reimbursement.
That makes total sense to me, I just would, um, I just think it would be cool to find out what the grants are going for.
I'm wondering if it's maybe even, um, maybe even if it's just some highlights of some of the things that we've gotten money for, not detail, but like, just to know some key things.
Wasn't the, the pass?
The SMART pass.
The SMART pass, wasn't that from a, a grant, maybe? I don't know.
I believe we, it's for that from operating capital.
Okay, but, but maybe, go ahead.
The Pennebent County Youth Activity Grant, so that's for gymnastic equipment.
Oh, I gotcha.
So, yeah, so it's...
Yeah, I think sometimes we're wondering, you know, like, we see this, when it come in, we see it in the donations and the consent.
Yeah.
Sometimes that stuff's listed, I think, I don't know, but, um...
Some of these will have already been accepted as a donation, grants you don't usually accept, I don't think, as a, as a donation.
Yeah.
So that process will continue, but then this is establishing the budget, and we're sure we could just add a little column over here, as these are on the consent agenda in the future, with a little, here's a highlight of what...
Yeah, what some of the stuff is going for, just so that we have some sense of that, because some of the other things that happen, too, is sometimes people ask, like, say we're in a budget year, and they're like, can we make contributions, can we do things as individuals, or, I see it, you know, that's the, the foundation up here, and that's a very common resource for us, so if people want to make, you know, work through foundations or through other organizations, make some of those contributions, uh, does that, you know, I think, just having some information like that?
We, I, in the past, I think we've had the foundation come and talk about some of the things, the projects that they wonder, maybe I've seen that, like, at a site or something, but I've, that would be a way, you know, they would, I'm sure, love to talk about that work, but they're...
Like, we had our, um, some of that stuff, too, yeah.
And I'm the liaison to the Schools and Community Foundation, I'm sure they'd be glad, but I was gonna say, a lot of these are probably, like, teacher-specific or foster specific, like, you can, people can write grants, yeah.
There's always a lot of really interesting things, like, to your point.
Yeah, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to like, micromanage or anything like that, I'm just curious, because it sounds like, there, it, it's, um, if anything, just to be able to say, hey, thank you...
Yeah.
...for this awesome thing, this is, you know, like, especially if people are donating money, they wanna know specifically what it's going to, and we can say, now I can say, well, um, the Pennebent County Youth Act... And we can say, now I can say, well, the Pennebent County Youth Activity Grant that somebody wrote, which is great, you know, went to gymnastics equipment. And that was the conversation, I think, I'm remembering.
Okay.
We were, did they ask me one time if we had a grant writer?
Oh, yeah, we've talked a lot about that.
Yeah, I knew that we had had a conversation, okay.
So good, some, just some general feedback. Appreciate this process, appreciate this update. I did skip over the fact that we should have brought it to, you know, brought it officially to the agenda here. So I will, at this point, I will take a motion to bring this forward. Do we have a motion to bring it forward? Thank you, Sarah. I'll second this, okay? With that, was there any further discussion here about the, about this item? Appreciate that. You've offered a few thoughts about maybe getting some more updates about where this money is going. Just super informed in that we can share that back with the community or they can say thank you when we interact with the foundation or whatever, and so we do know any of these organizations out there. Good conversation. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes 6-0. Thank you very much. All right. That brings us up to a slew of policy development. Instead of reading all of them, I think, Sarah, I will, and Dr. Hines, I will just, well, I will, okay, no, I'll bring these because they're individual items.
They're individual, yeah.
It is recommended that the school board approve policy 722 data request as presented. Do we have a motion to do that?
So moved.
So moved by Virginia, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ann. Okay, now, update on 722.
And I will invite Dr. Hines to contribute anything that she sees fit here. And we talked about this at our study session. This is the one that's about public data and data subject requests. This is the one that designates who is our quote unquote responsible authority. And you see that at the end there, it's our director of communications. And then talks about, there's some changes related to like cost for making copies of things. These are, these are all statutory except for the cost.
Correct. And there has been no updates or changes since the first reading.
I don't think people have a lot of concerns about this one we talked about.
There was an article in NPR today about schools that are facing challenges with this. If you or anybody in the public wants to learn a little bit more about some of these challenges, including a school that's dealing with a one million dollar debt, it has to be one million dollars. So, okay, we have had a motion and we have a second. So any further discussion? All right, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes 6-0. Okay, that brings us up to 612.1. It is recommended that the school board approve policy 612.1, development of parent guardian and family engagement as presented. Do we have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Moved by Taylor. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ann. All right, discussion, updates.
I believe there have been no changes to this also. This is federally required policy related to development of parent guardian and family engagement policies. The title one program. So, Dr. Hines, is there anything that you would like to share?
Nope. So this is just a review to indicate and show the public that we are all constantly reviewing our policies just to make sure that they're up to date and they reflect our values and there has been no changes in this policy.
Any further conversations, questions, clarifications? Okay, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that's 6-0. That brings us up to, it is recommended that the school board approve policy 640 out of state travel by board members as presented. Do we have a motion? I'll move that. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Taylor. Okay, discussion, updates?
Again, no changes since we talked about this at our study session. And this is about if any of us were to travel out of state. There's one change on here, which I believe is a statutory change. Where it used to give a presumption that travel, travel to the national or regional meeting of the National School Board Association was presumed to fit the purpose of something for which we could cover the cost. That's no longer a presumption, doesn't mean it couldn't, it's just not a stated presumption. I don't think any of us have traveled as, as long as I've been on the board, even current of school board members traveling out of state.
Not since before COVID.
Yeah, so I don't know, Dr. Hines, if there's anything to add?
No, I have nothing to add.
And for just board members, I think most people know that there are two competing national boards now. The, the, the national one that you suggested, which I think has taken a slightly more, for lack of a better description, conservative that, and then there's COSPA, I think, which is more progressive and some more progressive states have ended reports. And I believe that MSBA is part of COSPA. But anyway, so if you're interested in exploring more of what the national organizations are, I just throw that out there, you might want to check with MSBA, do some more exploration on your own if you're interested in learning more about what those different organizations are. I just share what I think I've learned. So, all right, any further discussion? All right, then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes 6-0. Thank you. All right, it is recommended that the school board approve policy 907 rewards as presented. Do we have a motion on that?
Uh, yes.
Thank you, Virginia, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ann, right? Okay, then discussion here, updates.
Again, no changes since we last talked about this. I think we talked a little bit about whether this is a policy we even need to have or want to have. But it is, we're not required to issue rewards or offer rewards. It's just as if we were ever going to, this is how we would do it. Certainly would be open to folks out.
Rewards in, towards solving of a crime or something like that. It feels very old timey.
It's very specific, yes. It has to lead to the conviction of a person who has committed or conspired to commit a crime against students or school employees or school board members or volunteers as a result of their affiliation with the school district or against school district properties. It's quite specific. I don't, I have a hard time envisioning a scenario in which we would offer a reward, but nonetheless, if we were to, this is how we would have to do it.
We looked at it. So, and you checked on it, right? So we know that it exists and we know that if there's any concerns or any pretty headshots on it out there. It's listed on, as, within all of our policies, I would say, and to, so questions, comments, any further discussion? Okay, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes 6-0. Okay, thank you for those policy updates. That brings us up to approval of superintendent's performance review and timeline. And we'll get this to the, bring this to the table here, then we can have discussion. It's recommended that the school board approve superintendent performance review and timeline for the 24, 25 academic year as presented. Do we have a motion? I'll move that. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Taylor. Okay, discussion. This is, we've talked in a previous board meeting about some things that we wanted to focus on with, in conversation with Dr. Hines about how to review her this first year. We've collaborated with our folks at MSBA to hear, get some suggestions about it. And we've determined an approach to do that. And we have a performance review document that was in here. And Dr. Hines has shared it with people for any sort of comments or see if there was any additional feedback. There had been some expressed at times, but nobody has submitted any changes at this point. So we're presuming, which doesn't mean that we can't change it. I don't think we can modify something at a later time, but in here we have a timeline of what the next steps are. And that includes sort of like a February check in with Dr. Hines, which would be a little bit more informal kind of way for us to check in with her. And then a more formal, I forget, I'm looking what that.
June 10.
June 10 would be the actual, then, formal process. So is there any comments, feedbacks, questions about anything here at this point? I think we just wanted to get something on paper and wanted something to have Dr. Hines to work toward for the public to understand that, you know, we, this is our job. We have one employee as a school board and that is our superintendent. And we do evaluate that person and we want to give them feedback and we want them to understand where our concerns are, where our interests are, where our focus is at. And as MSBA coach, there's a lot of things that we've asked Dr. Hines to do, but there's only a few things that we're probably going to really be able to focus on. I think she's doing all of them by everything that we can see so far, but there's just a few of them that we want to make sure that we're touching in and a few that she wants to make sure that she hears from us, that she's doing what she needs to be doing in these areas. So with all of that said, the, we'll provide some updates too about this, I think. As particularly when we do the formal review, we do provide an update to the community as well. So if there's any other questions, comments, anything else, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 6-0. All right, that brings us up to an employee agreement. It's been a while since we've done one of these. We have Director Rick Pryor, our Director of Human Resources outgoing. It is recommended that the school board approve the new 25, 26 Director of Human Resources contract as presented. Do I have a motion to bring this forward?
So moved.
Moved by Ann, do you have a second? I have a second by top of your team. So that brings us to, as I was saying, outgoing Director Pryor. Thank you for your service, but let's, let's get an update on where we're going and what's next.
Been a while since I've done this and I'm kind of emotional about it, so.
Well, and it's, and it's, it's a limited view, right?
Chairs, members of board, superintendent. It's my great privilege to bring before you the contract for the next Director of Human Resources, Jason Lowey. We, we posted the job in September. We held it open for approximately 30 days. Held interviews, had in excess of 20 applicants, some very highly qualified people who, you know, were impressive to the interview team. And Mr. Lowey came out on top. Jason's been with our district for the last 10 years. I've had the privilege of working with him closely, sharing information. And he's ascended from HR specialist to consultant to Assistant Director of Human Resources in his time here. And I can't think of a person who's more ready to work with a superintendent and cabinet and the board. So I'm very pleased.
Comments, questions from our board members?
Could have knocked me over with a feather. Not surprised at all to hear that name when that, when that came up. We're really excited for you, Jason, and thrilled and like, I, I don't think, I mean, probably folks don't know, right? Like we, we don't always know every, every staff number, you know. But, and, you know, obviously Rick is here a lot, but Jason has been here in the boardroom, I don't know how many times in the last year, and has, you know, just been super consistent and showing up for, you know, for whatever, like ready for anything. So I'm just really grateful to be with Jason.
Other comments, feedback from the board? I think Director Pryor, we're appreciative of your time here with the school district and helping us navigate through a number of things and to understand that, that this is, I don't want to overshare anything, but like. It's, you know, you're, you're at that point where you've got other priorities in life, I think, right?
Well, I've, I've had a great 10 and a half years here.
Yeah.
I spent 16 years with St. Paul. I spent six years with Minnesota Hospital Association, three years with Minneapolis Public Schools, and then 10 and a half here. It's been an honor. I've loved all but like two days. And that's, you know, that's, it's, it's a wonderful thing to be able to say, yes, I am going to retire. I've got a granddaughter. I've got lots of things I gotta get done. And only, what do they say, 17 years, 17 summers to do that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for this.
We're appreciative of everybody, including all the people that are in this room and people who take the afternoon to, to work in our schools. We know that, uh, there's other places where you could do this work for more pay and maybe for even more benefits. But, but people who make a, make a commitment to serve our students, to serve our community like this, to give up that time to do all that work, I think, we're, we're really appreciative of it. People who continue to come here and people who continue to seek us out and want to work in departments like this. Just really appreciate it.
Thank you. And it's much easier to do this job when you have a supportive board who's together and, you know, sets a consistent tone for their employees to work. And so it's, I, that makes it a lot better.
You don't get to hire the board, unfortunately, though, as human resources, one area that you don't get to touch. But you do assist us in a number of ways too, in terms of things that we have to do as well too. And as Ann was saying, we don't often get to see people. We also don't know much about these processes of hiring. And so we don't know when, if, where you know that, anything about Jason being in the process. I think to see the end result is, is really great. So, thank you. And all those in favor of approving Jason Lowey as our new Director of Human Resources for 2026? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 6-0. Thank you so much. We are at that time in our agenda where we do our board member updates. So anybody have some board member updates?
I don't remember when, if I shared this, but the open house was great at the high school. They didn't call it an open house. They called it family engagement, so, but I'm old timey, I guess, as Colin says. So it was great. It was a great opportunity for us to see the cafeteria, to follow our kids' schedule, to get lost in the building and to feel like a freshman. It was great.
We have an election coming up in this country in a couple of weeks, November 5. Is it three weeks? Two weeks?
Two.
Two weeks from today?
Yes.
You, everyone who lives in St. Louis Park should have received one of these in the mail, the election guide, our city. I don't work for them, but they do such an amazing job. I love to just cheerlead the elections department in City of St. Louis Park. They are incredible. And so the information here is very clear. You can go to City Hall on weekdays up until the election and also on the Saturday before, no, two Saturdays, this Saturday and Saturday, November 2. And so then November 3, they have voting in person at City Hall or you can go to your polling place on Tuesday, the 5th. I went to City Hall on Friday and it took about five minutes and I was number 29 to put it in the machine. So that was super exciting. And, because now you get to put it in the machine, you don't have to do the whole absentee envelope thing. So make sure you go and do this. All, all of this information is also on their website in multiple languages.
Thank you.
I had a chance to check out the Equila Fall Festival. I saw Director Ibrahim there and Director Anderson, and it was wonderful. I, like, we'll never take the events that, that we put on for granted because they're just a wonderful experience and a great opportunity for like community building and all of the events that I've been to over the past year. And they've always been put on, it's always been fantastic. Great food, great activities for the kids to get involved in. So if you have a chance to check out any of these that we bring up, definitely do it. And then I think there's a craft fair going on, on November 2 at Lenox from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. So check that out if you are into crafts. Oh, I said, oh, I said Equila. I meant to say Susan Lindgren was the fall festival.
Yeah, I thought you were going to say, because I was like, did I have to say?
Definitely Susan Lindgren. Yeah, thank you for that.
Anybody else have some updates?
Before update, I just, some of the community member asked me, sometimes I step up during our meetings. As a Muslim, my prayer, if I have time today, sometimes one of the prayers comes to an hour meeting, that's why. Okay, um, so the communication, so I went, I and Mayor Muhammad went to Columbus, Ohio to attend the fourth, I was there the first one, yeah, the fourth, some, not, not American elected officials. I have a chance to meet, you know, board members from Canada, some of the different, you know, some of the differences in the United States. It was a great experience. We also met with a lot of different elected officials in different, because we were, we were 20 people. Not all of them, some of the people who are missing too, like we were 20 people. It was great difference. So I was there on Saturday and Sunday, I was Monday. So that was, that was already mentioned, so. Sometimes it's difficult to keep up because like we used to do communications every week. Now we have to do every other week, so you don't remember that. But I'm glad to be back here. I met, we met also US ambassador Somalia, Washington, maybe over there. It would be time to Minnesota to send.
Other updates? That's it, you're good, okay. I know, I did attend a quote VTO and as I was saying, they provided an update about their efforts there and talked about a number of events coming up for the year, which most of the families, I think, are informed about. Pancake breakfast, bingo, and all the things that they're planning for the year and stuff. So just a number of ways to go and see things that are happening in schools. I know that there are a lot of things that are happening at the high school that probably, like there's a football. like there's a football game going on tonight. The latest update I got was a few minutes ago, it was 28-0 St. Louis Park, so it's looking promising for our football team that they will proceed to the next round.
You said 28-0.
28-0, 28 SLP. We'll see. I plan to go over there and check it out after this, but I know that there's a play coming up too, probably before the next time that we have a meeting that's musical, is it musical?
Yeah, The Wizard of Oz.
The Wizard of Oz, the musical. And some other things, some other great ways for the community just to come out and see that are even more, you know, less public than that way too, than some of ours.
Was the musical the high school or the?
It's at the.
High school musical, The Wizard of Oz.
Yeah, but it's at the high school, right?
It's at the high school.
Yeah, because finally we have access to that auditorium and all that stuff. And so community members can check out, not a new auditorium, but the new space outside of that area. So, all right, so we've made it through pretty quickly through our meeting and we have some people that have other visits to be, so I do want to respect that. But if there's anything else, otherwise I will make a, I will make the motion first to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second by the team. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes six zero.